All right, welcome everybody to the May 27th Columbia Heights Public Schools School Board Meeting. If you are able, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. All right, Michelle, if you could, will you please call roll?
Absolutely. Who?
Here.
Smiths? Anwar?
Here.
Rude?
Here.
Maderas?
Here.
Petway here, Palmer?
Here.
Granland?
Here.
Superintendent Stenbik?
Here.
All right, thank you very much. Columbia Heights Public Schools, our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. So tonight, we are starting off with some of the best news. We get to celebrate our Highlander highlights. So we're gonna call people up in two different sort of batches at a time. So I think we are going to start first with the Athena and Oscar Eng Award recipients. Carolina Baldovinos, Miranda, and Daniel Abiba, if they are here.
No, is that right?
Oh. Hang on. Mine are in a, I have mine, I signed them and put them in the wrong order. Look at that. Sorry about that. All right, so we will have Carolina Baldovinos, Miranda, and Daniel Abiba come up for AAA, as well as Elizabeth Schoenbauer and LaRon Collins, our Athena Award winner and Oscar Eng Award winners. So if they are here and they can come up, I'll read a little-
With Mr. Henderson?
With Mr. Henderson, yep. And I'll read a little blurb.
To the table, right?
Huh?
To the table?
Yes, please come up to the table, yes. Look, y'all, I have not been doing this for often, okay? So. We're all still learning, so. So while folks are walking up, I'm gonna read a little bit about these achievements. So we're gonna start first with Carolina Baldovinos, Miranda, and Daniel Abiba with the AAA nominees. So Columbia Heights High School seniors, Daniel Abiba and Carolina Baldovinos, Miranda, are this year's Academics Arts and Athletics Award AAA nominees. Each year, high school seniors are selected for their participation in the Minnesota State High School League-sponsored arts and athletics while maintaining high academic standing. They're eligible to receive a $1,000 scholarship and be honored at the AAA on-court ceremony at the Minnesota State High School League Boys' State Basketball Tournament in March. To be eligible for the AAA Award nomination, a student must be a high school senior, have a cumulative GPA of 3.0 or higher, participate in at least one MSHSL-sponsored athletic program, and one arts activity program, comply with a student code of conduct, and complete the application form and submit it. So with that, Mr. Henderson, do you want to talk a little bit about-
Yeah, I'll say a couple of things about them.
Yeah, thank you.
Chair Granland, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik, thank you all for having me. Us, actually, quite a big group. So we'll talk about our first two AAA Award winners who are sitting to our right, a really awesome award from the Minnesota State High School League. Carolina was recognized for obviously her high GPA, her recognition by the Minnesota State High School League in art, specifically an excellent rating in the Region 5AA Festival, her involvement in speech, and her involvement in volleyball and track and field. She received an All-Conference Award this past season from volleyball, and she's been just an awesome leader within our building and a really great example of what a student athlete really is. And then Daniel is recognized for this award for his high academics, his All-State Band accomplishments, and for excelling in both or all cross-country, boys swim, and track and field. He received an All-Conference Award in cross-country this past year and just missed out on the state tournament there. And I think still working on hopefully making a state bid here on Wednesday and Friday, and Carolina also has an opportunity for that too in track. Really, just a great example of determination and hard work for over the years. And for Daniel in particular, dealing with some injuries too throughout that and just coming back from that. So two really awesome examples of student athletes and students within our building that are involved in many things while also keeping their academics up.
Wonderful, thank you. Carolina and Daniel, do either of you have anything you want to share? It's okay.
You don't have to, you don't have to share a lot, you can say anything if you want.
That's okay. Does anybody on the board, do you have anything that you want to, to share or to ask? Go ahead, Julie.
I get excited when we see students really achieve these kinds of awards. It's, it's amazing how, how you take this into your adult life going forward. Either of you going to continue in a sport after high school? Do you know if you're going to, like, I know they have women's volleyball, they have men's volley- they have all kinds of things available. Do you have any plans to continue maybe into college?
Yeah, so I've, ever since I first had my injuries, I always, always wanted to continue in high school because I never really thought I had my chance in high, in high school because, because of these setbacks. But I plan to go to Minnesota State University, Morehead, and do Division II athletics in track and cross-country.
That's awesome.
Oh, yeah, and also pursue in band as well because I just love music. And I don't plan to major in it, but I do plan to continue it and minor in it and hopefully succeed there in college as well.
That's fantastic.
I'm not typically planning to do any of my sports after high school just because I'm entering the engineering field and I feel like that's a lot of work coming up ahead. But I definitely, like, my brother, he's a freshman varsity on boys volleyball, so I know for a fact I'm gonna help him over the summer or like whenever he's off-season. So volleyball will always stick with me, my family loves volleyball, I will always play volleyball, I think for the rest of my life. And for track, I'm not sure as well. I mean, the real aspect of track that I love is more like just working out. So I know I'll be working out for a long time as well. But coming up ahead, I'm really just focused on this school part because I know it's gonna take a lot out of me.
I understand that, thank you for sharing, appreciate it.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you both so much. And, you know, you have always been, you know, involved in these sports activities and, and, and the, you know, music and all, you know, the arts, and it's so wonderful. This is really one of the best meetings is when we get to have these conversations and to celebrate your achievements with you as well. Carolina, I know I've seen your art over the years at Silverwood. Danielle, just last week, I got to hear you play your trumpet, the song that you had composed at Silverwood too. So it's really great to be able to see you all just really achieving so much. And it's, we couldn't be prouder of you, so.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
I just wanted to echo my congratulations to you both on all of your accomplishments and achievements. And I've also had the opportunity to meet both of you a little bit in your time here in the district. And I just think that the, all of your involvement and engagement, you've been able to take that and also bring those perspectives to everything else you do in our schools. I had the opportunity to have Carolina join me at Highland a couple of times volunteering over there, and Daniel was able to participate in our strategic planning process for the board. And so your involvement across all of those areas really helps bring those perspectives forward and inform everything else that we're doing too. So congratulations again.
Wonderful. So we'll have you hang out there for a second and then we will talk about our Athena winner and our Oscar Eng Award. So I see that we have Elizabeth Schoenbauer here. So I'll read a little bit about this. So Columbia Heights High School seniors Elizabeth Schoenbauer and LaRon Collins are this year's winners of the Athena Award and the Oscar Eng Award. The Athena Award is given to one senior female athlete from each participating school who has distinguished herself in special individual athletic achievement or superior achievements in one or more sports. And then the Oscar Eng was a longtime educator and administrator for the Columbia Heights School District for three decades. He served as an assistant principal for a number of years and was the first athletic director at Columbia Heights Public Schools. This award is given to a male senior student who has exemplified hard work and excelled in athletics and academics. So with that, Director Hennekes, or Henderson, sorry. You know, nobody can hate on me too much because there was a lot of times where people were saying Kathy Kelly, Superintendent Kelly, so.
It's not the first time.
Thank you.
I can talk. LaRon was not able to be here tonight, so I'll talk just briefly about him. He joined us in the, his sophomore year at Columbia Heights, and he lettered in football and track and field. He received an All-District Award twice in football. And this past year, he was named the MVP of our sub-district in football. So not only from our school, but from our whole sub-district. He absolutely loves football, he loves the, every aspect of football, and it's really been a pleasure watching him over the years. I really enjoy the way that he plays. And he does plan to continue playing football next year at Ellsworth Community College. So exciting, he just did a signing day with us, I think that was last week. Two weeks ago? I don't, I think it was last week. But unfortunately, he was not able to be here with us tonight. But Libby is our Athena winner, excited for her. She's been a three-sport athlete for us here at Heights in swim and dive, dance, and softball. She received three honorable mentions and two All-Conference Awards in dance and two honorable mentions in swim and dive. Overall, she's had 15 varsity letters in her time here. And she's also a PSEO, a PSEO student for the past two years or one year? Two years with a nearly 4.0 GPA, so pretty incredible stuff. Also, a really just a great example of a student athlete and just a leader within our building. Especially seeing her with some of those younger Highlanders that we have on some of those teams. So congratulations to you all, congratulations to Libby.
So again, I'll open it up before I say anything else. Who has some questions or, Julie, go ahead.
I just, I just want to say, I was at the JV meet and timing, and I saw how wonderful you were for the younger girls coming up and learning, you know, learning the process of competitive swimming. And I just appreciated seeing you support them. And I could just see that you were gonna be that Athena winner. So I just want to thank you for that, and I want you to consider continuing swimming after high school. It's, my daughter was a swimmer, and I know how hard it is, the thousands of yards you swim is incredible work as well as keeping up with your academics. But it's great for your mental, you know, your mental clarity and everything. And I can see that obviously with your GPA, you kept up. So congratulations to you because I know that's a really hard thing to do.
Does anybody else have anything that they want to add before I get to go? So in the information we have, it looks like you are planning on pursuing your nursing degree, is that correct?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Awesome, that's fantastic.
I plan to like dance at Concordia, but they don't really have like a dance team. It's more just like a, on the side for fun.
Yeah?
Yeah.
That's awesome. Well, we're really excited and proud to see that, you know, all you've accomplished. And honestly, when, 15 letters? Did you leave any for anyone else? No, I'm just kidding. No, congratulations, that, that alone is an achievement. Just, and it really speaks volumes to, to your work ethic and to, you know, everything that you bring to it. Like, you definitely are probably very tired. But, you know, thank you for, for all of this, and our school is better for students like you, so.
Yep.
Thank you. With that, so now we get to do this really fun thing where we're all gonna take pictures. And Emma's gonna tell us how she wants that to go. And then, then we'll talk with our next person after that. So, and you'll get to shake hands with the board and the directors that are here. So we'll start here, and the rest of the board and superintendent will go over by the, and you get to go down and shake. Yep, so they're coming this way, and y'all are coming up to, no, 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 they come this way. And then they'll go that way.
Don't listen to me.
Don't listen to me. Yes, thank you. That's what I thought, I'm just gonna borrow.
Thank you, thank you.
And now I get to make everybody come sit down just to get back up again soon.
We need it, it's okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's good.
Break it up a little bit.
Okay. So now everybody's back. Could Temoi Epps come up with, I believe, Mr. Hollerman and Ms. Mann? Yeah. Come on up. So super excited to have you here. So Columbia Heights High School senior Temoi Epps made history, made history, y'all, as the school's first-ever state speech tournament winner, taking gold in poetry. So proud. And with that, I will pass it over to Mr. Hollerman and Ms. Mann, see if they, you know, what they want to share.
I'm Nick Hollerman, and I am one of the speech coaches with Rachel Mann. And we're just, really excited to talk about Temoi and his amazing accomplishment at the state speech tournament. It is a big deal to get to the state speech tournament. Only 24 students per category qualify for this out of eight sections. And then from there, they compete as a normal tournament, and then the top eight students go on to a final round. And they compete in front of a panel of five judges who all score them, and then from there, they rank out. And so Temoi, after all of his final round, got to the final round. And he shouldn't state that he is a two-time state qualifier, so he, this is his second year going to state. He went to state last year in pros. And then after, finally at the final round, he then was named the state champion in poetry.
So exciting.
And then I'll just add on that this was Temoi's second season in speech, so you can tell he's just got a knack for public speaking and that personality and character he brings with him. And he actually participated in three different categories this season. So not just achieving excellence in poetry, but was a consistent finalist in his other two categories as well. And aside from placing highly at, I think, every single tournament he competed at, he was one of our speech captains this season and just such a leader and such a positive presence on our team. Someone who's always encouraging other speakers, bringing that positivity, and just like lighting up all of the rooms and really celebrating not just his wins, but the team as a whole. So we're definitely gonna miss him next year because he's just embodied like the heart and soul of the speech team this year.
Awesome. Temoi, do you have anything you want to share with us? I know, right? Like, not to put you on the spot.
I was gonna say something, and then I forgot it, so. But, nah, it's just like, it's been a really fantastic experience, like, being on the speech team, meeting so many different people from so many different schools, and like, winning six, like. It was just like a lot, and I'm still, sometimes I'm still thinking about it like, wow, I did that? Like, but yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's fantastic. I want to say when I saw it come across my Instagram, my Insta, and I read it out loud, my son goes, "Temoi, he's the GOAT." So, and that's very true. And then later, when I saw the, the Insta post from, I think it was the Minnesota State High School League, where you were very surprised and very happy, and they loved that too. And honestly, I don't think that anybody should have been surprised, and certainly not you because you are really fantastic, and that, that shows, and that comes through.
Thank you.
Yeah. So glad to celebrate with you here today. Says, anybody, I'll open up to the board, oh, Asa, yes.
You were just such a great speech captain, and Ms. Mann is right with being like so supportive of everybody. And you were just so great, Tay, congratulations.
Anybody else?
Were you gonna say something?
All right. So now I get to make everybody come up again, you'll get to shake hands, we'll take pictures. But yes, we're so glad that you're here, so congratulations. So we'll take pictures and then you'll get to go. We used to do it where you'd take pictures and then you'd awkwardly go over here and then go back over here, so we're trying new stuff.
I'm a little hard-headed, I'll know it.
It's okay, we got you.
So I'm like, I'm like this?
I was gonna say.
Congratulations.
You're welcome. Yes, absolutely. So now this is the moment where I say, if you would like to stay, you are more than welcome, but if you need to go, that's also okay.
They're already out.
You know. At least we know I said it, right? It's all good. Moving on, we'll go to agenda approval adjustments announcements. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Laura, can I get a second?
Second.
Jessica. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Announcements. Hang on, everybody. June 10th, 6:00 PM, school board meeting in the community room. June 11th, last day of school and graduation. June 17th, we have our work session here in the community room, that starts at 5:00. That is a different time than it usually does, it is earlier, so please note that if that is important for you. And then on the 19th of June, our school district is closed. Communication to the board. Any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to their brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Employees, students, and school board members are covered by the data privacy laws, and concerns and/or complaints about either are inappropriate to address during an open forum at a public meeting. Concerns and/or complaints about specific students or specific employees should be addressed to the administration. Complaints about school board members should be directed to the school board chair and/or superintendent. We do have communication to the board, so please wait. We're good, all right. Moving on to the consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Michelle, can I get a second?
Second.
Laura, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Just for clarity at home, the consent agenda includes the personnel report, the ABE lease, minutes from previous meetings, and the second policy reading. Moving on, we have the acknowledgement of contributions. Much shorter than previous weeks, which is wonderful and much appreciated. Okay. Acknowledgement of contributions resolution. Minnesota Statute 123B dot 02 permits school boards to quote, "receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. On that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof," end quote. Therefore, the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 resolves to accept with appreciation the $2,860.35 in monetary contributions detailed in the background. Detailed background. Monetary, the Valley View Sunshine Group donated $1,000 to the Valley View Sunshine Scholarship Fund. The Liddell Fund donated $250 to the Valley View Sunshine Scholarship Fund. Rebel donated $1,110.35 to North Park. And Jennifer Carrera donated $500 to Columbia Heights High School for teacher appreciation. The total fiscal year 2024-2025 monetary contributions to date, $182,837.54. Can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Julie, can I get a second?
Second.
Jessica, since it is a resolution, we'll need a roll call vote. Michelle?
Yep. Who?
Aye.
Maderas?
Aye.
Petway? Aye. Palmer?
Aye.
Granland?
Aye.
Just a point of order for discussion.
Oh, yes, Jessica.
Just a point of order for discussion.
Yes.
The motion's on the floor and we're voting, but just.
Okay, motion, motion carries. Discussion.
Just for future motions.
Oh, yeah.
Need a discussion, yeah.
Yep, see, look, I'm still, one day I will make it through a whole school board meeting.
Nope, you're good, you're good.
Without screwing the Roberts rules, everybody. Today is not that day. Okay, so that passes. All right, we will move forward into discussion reports and information items with reports from members of the board. We'll start with Laura.
Okay, I don't really have a whole lot to, to report on. I attended the work-study session last week. I was briefly, sadly, only able to make a small portion of the Expressions Art Show over at Silverwood. But as always, it was amazing, and although those that got to go out there and listen to all the bands, I only heard part of the jazz band, but they were, they were so good. And, you know, and next year, next year I'm gonna make all both days the whole time, so good job to everybody out there. Such amazing artwork. And there was one that I thought was really nice. My, my kid had actually made in, in class one of those little side tables, and then there was a fish hanging from it on the inside of it. I just, I thought that was so clever. I just absolutely loved it, so. I actually have that table in my room, you know, so now I look at it and I kind of go, wow, I remember this great art project with this fish hanging. wow, I remember this great art project with this fish hanging from like chains underneath. I thought it was so beautiful. That's pretty much it. Oh, I was able to review some of the curriculum out there this, prior to this meeting. That's it.
Awesome. Thank you. Michelle?
Yeah, so I attended the Family Center Garden Party that they had a little bit ago. It was a lot of fun. It's really hot, but it was a lot of fun. I also attended last week's work session and the AMSD board meeting. And I also attended the Silverwood Art Showcase and Honor Band and Choir. Well, I did the primary day, so I went for the littles. And it was awesome. It was great to see, like, my daughter be now in that fifth grade area where we used to watch her, you know, either watching the older kids or be, you know, a little younger. So that was, that was a great experience. And yeah, it was, it was a great time. That's all I have. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you. Jessica?
Sure. Well, for better or worse, I was not able to attend the last board meeting, so you're stuck with a longer list of updates for me because I didn't have a report at the last meeting. I did however, was able to, to watch the board meeting I missed. And so I saw everyone's updates, including, remember Petway had mentioned that she attended the parent and child cooking class, the strawberry shortcake class that they did. And I always have to mention my attendance at those here because I just think that they do such a great job with those classes. It's a really great way to connect some of our younger Highlanders with the different activities we have available in the district. And so I'm excited to see more folks participating and signing up for those parent and child cooking classes. And I'm excited to see that they're continuing into the fall. So that's great. I was able to attend Fine Arts Night at Highland. I also volunteered at the Valley View Carnival. I know I was slinging pizzas with Chair Granland, so that was lots of fun as always. And congratulations to everybody involved with that endeavor because it is, it is a, it is a big, big event. I also stopped by the local 710 reception for Teacher of the Year Jennifer Cahill. So it was great to be able to celebrate everything that she's done for students in our district. She was also my middle child's teacher. So that was cool to kind of talk to her about her time here in the district and her connection with my family as well. I attended PTO meetings at both Highland and Columbia Academy. I was able to, like many of you, attend Scholarship Night at the high school. And I really appreciated the invitation to attend both that and also the donor reception before the event. To be able to talk to some of the leaders and organizations that support our students through scholarships. So that was really just an amazing night all around. And then I did attend the, the secondary night of the Expressions Art Show. And I watched many of the performances and all the students did a wonderful job. But I have to say, a personal highlight for me was the Marimba Band from Columbia Academy. They are incredible and the students looked like they were having so much fun performing. So I really, really, really enjoyed that. And then I attended the work session last week, the policy subcommittee meeting tonight. I was able to stop by one of our school field days and see the kids running around the high school track and participating in events. And I have to say, speaking of large events that have lots of pieces that need to be organized, our teachers and staff do such an amazing job organizing field days for all of our pre-K through fifth graders. All of the events. And then we always have high school students that volunteer to help lead through students through all of the stations and cheer them on. And they always are such, they're just so incredible with our younger students. And it's just really great to see, see that volunteerism and, and kind of helping out our younger Highlanders. So that was really cool. I think that's it for me. Thank you, Chair Granland.
Thank you. Julie?
I missed one of the board meetings this month and, but I did want to mention that I did go to Scholarship Night. And like Jessica said, and the scholarships, we're so grateful to our community. And it's just wonderful to see the achievements of these young people going up and receiving their scholarships. We hope every one of them use those scholarships. I also attended the work session last week. And then I did perform my duties as treasurer to review January and February's Financial Treasurers Report. And selected samples from all different categories of expense and found everything to be in, in order.
Great. Thank you. So as for me, I, since the last time we met, I also attended the work session prior to that. I signed some diplomas with Superintendent Stenvik, which was delightful. I also had phone calls and exchanged messages with Senator Kunesh, who is our senator and also chair of the Senate Education Finance Committee, to talk about, you know, where things are at and to, again, remind her, although she knows and is very much, very much in support of us, the funding piece with compensatory aid. I also attended the Expressions Art at Silverwood and that was, it was so wonderful. And my, you know, it was great to see the kids there, you know, doing a song from Annie and then the bands playing. And Daniel Abiba had his original song that he had written that they played. And it was just so fantastic to be around all of that art, music, you know, pottery, and, you know, pictures and paintings as well. So our, it never fails to delight me to see how, how creative and inspired our students are. And the work that they do is just amazing. So. And then I had the, I signed more diplomas today, which is a fantastic problem to have and I love it. I had the chair meeting prior to this as well as the policy meeting. I also had a chance to look at some of our curriculum that was here for the public prior to this meeting. And I also was able to speak with a student about some concerns and questions that they had about AP classes moving forward. So, and was able to allay some of her, some of their concerns. So. Moving on to Superintendent's report and correspondents. Superintendent Stenvik?
Thank you, Chair Granland. I've had multiple meetings with our student school board representatives and they're going to be presenting some information next. I completed the joint school visits with our teacher union president Honigs. We visited together classrooms and programs at all five schools. Have not made it yet to the Family Center, but that's, that's next. I met with Principal Burkus and incoming Principal Shirk as part of their succession planning. And there will be a summer, this, this summer there'll be a group of Columbia Academy staff that will get together to help collectively plan for the school year. I participated in the graduation ceremony for our Clases Para Padres, which is a parent class that ran for about nine weeks. So it was really exciting to have all the families and children and parents and the parents walking across the stage, receiving their certificate. And as mentioned, the Expressions Art Show this year was outstanding. And I just want to thank the Heightening Arts Committee who worked so hard to put all of that together. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And now we will move into the report from our student school board representatives. And we're doing things a little bit different and they are going to give us a presentation.
Greetings, Chair Granland, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik. Today we have an update for you guys.
Our mission, all belong, all succeed, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner.
This presentation has all of our core values included.
This is an informational presentation. There is no governance to follow.
This presentation includes all belong student relationships for our Vision 2030. One A, students will have values included at every level, allowing them to grow self-advocacy and leadership skills.
We met with Columbia Heights Public Schools student leaders in grades two through 12 and asked, what do you most value about your school? What time of day at school do you most enjoy? What changes would you like to see your school? What are your top school-related issues? And what matter most to you about your school?
We met with Valley View, who had 35 students engaged in grades three through five. And what they value is kind people, amazing staff and students, was a quote from one of the students. Specialists, math, silent reading time, and recess. And something they wanted to note was that Valley View students collected nearly $2,000 to donate to SECA.
Their recommendations for change were to remove the requirement for uniforms, improve the playground, involve students in planning lunch menus, improve the student bathrooms, and extend recess.
What matters most to the students at Valley View is removing the requirement for uniforms, improving the playground, and improving the student bathrooms.
At Highland, we have met with 15 students in grades two through four. Their values were math and reading projects, outside activities for science, gym, connections with teachers, and friendships and making gifts for parents.
Their recommendations for change were to have recess before lunch rather than after, increase safe play at recess. When the weather is nice, they would like to be able to eat outside, more free time, and less phone usage.
What matters most to them is connection with teachers and friends. Highlander of the Month, which shows the values that are discussed at the school assemblies and are chosen by teachers.
North Park School for Innovation, what they value is teachers and how they care for their students. Their STEM-focused curriculum with math and science. Environment, how they focus on taking care of nature and their biodigester. They're one of the only, they are the only school in the country to have a biodigester. And their projects and specialists like art, which feature a lot of creativity.
Their recommendations for change were less testing and more projects, giving leadership jobs to the kids, no more hallway passes and just going when you want to. Let students pick Highlander of the Month and more field trips.
What matters most to the students at North Park School for Innovation was caring for the earth, learning how the plants grow and utilizing their biodigester, how creative they can be in different specialists in class, and how the whole community cares about them, which is a specific quote from a student.
At Columbia Academy, we met with seven students in grades six through eight. What they valued most is after-school programs like sports and activities, number of course offerings like engineering, diverse student bodies, breakfast and lunch options, student council, web, AVID, and career fairs, and different community events.
Their recommendations for change were that they were concerned by the cost of uniforms and extracurriculars, more options in colorway choices regarding hijabs and pants, more access to their cell phones, and improving the process for getting lunch, letting more students go at a time, higher number of cold lunches, a lunch pass to the library, bringing back more water cups, and increasing portion size of lunch.
What matters most to them is allowing black pants with the uniforms and the prices for activities, uniforms, and supplies.
We met with 14 students at Columbia Heights High School. And what they value the most is PSEO and being able to stack AP classes in ARCC, which is Anoka Ramsey Community College, ELA in the math department, a wide variety of activities and course offerings, and how no one gets turned away, band and the variety of instruments provided, the schedule, two days and four blocks a day, Chromebooks and working slash learning digitally allows for more organization.
Their recommendations for change were most post-secondary resources, including college counselors, update and add more equipment in sports, more social workers, access to more sites on Chromebooks and better Wi-Fi school-wide, and education about vaping and eliminating vaping in school.
What matters most to CHH as students was upgrading the Chromebooks more often, increasing communication about events, activities, and district news, post-secondary support, planning, and counselors, and more support staff, including social workers, therapists, and psychologists.
Our next steps. We will connect with Principal Winn on the high school topics. We will work with Superintendent Stenvik to address the topics at the other schools. And we will send a welcome back to school letter in September to all the students and inform the students of the topics we are working on. That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. So that was really fantastic. So, board members, what questions do we have? Michelle?
I wanted to applaud for a second.
Yeah, I know, right? Like, I think we should. To be fair, you guys did a great job with that and you had less technology problems than a lot of the adults that come up. So I'm just saying, like. Including myself.
No, I just wanted to say thank you for that. It was very informative. You know, our schools all have their own identities, right? I mean, we're in the same district, but they all have their own thing that they do. And it's really nice to hear all of, you know, their perspectives, you know, in one place and see them all kind of come together. It's so funny to me how they all had very serious and real things that they wanted, but they also had some, you know, some surface things that, you know, that they probably know we can't change for them. But I like that they still felt comfortable enough to share that and, and get it to us. But thank you guys for doing that. It seems like it was a, a more fun day than a work day, I'm hoping. So I hope you had a lot of fun doing that. And, and thank you for following up and letting them know that their voices matter. That is so important. So I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Jessica?
Excellent presentation. Thank you very much. I am so glad that you got to get out into our school buildings across the district and talk to our students. And I was just wondering if maybe you could share a little bit with us about like what that experience was like, you know, asking the students those questions and summarizing the things that they told you.
Yeah, so having two student school board members is great because both me and Atinan missed one of the days, but we were able to fill in for each other. So I talked to Highland, Valley View, and the high school. And it was, with the high school, they're like really serious with lots of like intense topics. And then the elementary schoolers are like kind of serious, but also very silly.
I really enjoyed getting to see the other elementary schools because I went to North Park, so I never really had a chance to go see Valley View or Highland. And it was really nice to hear what the students had to say. They all were very passionate about what they wanted to say and what they wanted us to know. So it was nice to go out there and hear directly from them.
Thank you.
Julie?
I do. I, I just want to say I really appreciate the little study you did on this is, you know, when it comes down to it, we're looking at our student body and finding out, is there a way we can help them achieve some of these things that they feel are missing in their school? Or areas where they want more of. So I noticed the theme of connection in, in most of the schools was to be connected with friends. And I, I think that, you know, those are things that hopefully those topics can come back and can be discussed by administration and how we can possibly come up with ways to help the students achieve those suggestions that they made. So thank you for doing that. It was, that's really great to hear.
Thank you. Laura?
This was amazing. I, I was so excited when I saw, saw the theme of your presentation here, you know, because this is really, this is really what we, we were, we were hoping that would be, you'd be able to, to, to bring to the board and, and help us to have that connection that we just don't have without your help. And I appreciate that a lot. Because I think coming from you and engaging these students is, is, is a lot more. I, I think that they can, they'll be able to identify with you a lot more than they can identify with any of us. So, and I, and I love the idea of eating outside. If the weather is nice, I like could totally get on board with that one. You know, I mean, what a great way to spend the afternoon. So a lot of these are, are pretty reasonable asks. And I don't know how well they would work into, you know, into a new philosophy, but being able to, to bring those forward and see if there's something that can be done for it is, is, is a great way of connecting with the students and making sure that their voices matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say I loved that there was sort of a through line, as Julia said, about connection. And I especially loved, you know, a couple of the things that stuck with me was obviously that. There's a lot of the community cares about me, my teachers care about me. And that is exactly what we want to hear. And we want students to walk through the door and feel connected and to feel like this is a safe place where people care about them. And so I'm really glad that that came through. I have to laugh about the uniforms because I have heard it for lots of years because my kids went to Value View and then CA like everybody. A lot of our students do. So that, I chuckled. I know that that's always the thing that students are concerned about. I did notice that I think by the time they got maybe to CA that we're just, it's just a thing that happens, just uniforms happen, like, you know, so less concern there. The, I also really loved that CA talked about the career fair, especially since that is something that was just done for the very first time. So to see that that was something that they really liked and was a positive, I think just shows how important that is. And I am sure that that feedback has been given already to Assistant Superintendent Niemboi. But it's, again, it's wonderful to see and to hear that the students also found a lot of value in those things and that helps us. You know, no decisions about us without us. And this is, you know, you guys are in the front lines and doing that work and helping bring that voice, so we appreciate it. If possible, Superintendent, can we get this presentation in our packet on Friday?
Sure.
Thank you. Is there anything else anybody would like to add? Go ahead.
Well, I just think it's funny about the uniforms. When I first started on the board, it was the big rush was let's get uniforms in the school and everybody wants to have uniforms. So it's kind of funny to see this full, kind of full circle is kind of as it ebbs and it flows here. I personally like the uniforms because I didn't have to go figure out how to buy school clothes when they were growing so fast overnight, you know. But I can understand how students want to have individuality.
Yeah, and I will say one thing that I heard last summer when I was out talking to folks in our community is I came across a former board member and he had said the idea at the time for having uniforms at the middle school is because we are all coming from three different elementaries and everybody's feeding into the same place. And it's a really easy way for kids to feel connected right away because they're all coming in and wearing the same thing. And it's a new place for everybody. And that was really a lot of the idea behind it. And I can see that makes a lot of sense. And so I think, and I never had that context.
All on the same team. All on the same team. That was the theme.
Yeah, so, but thank you both so much for that, for bringing us this. Thank you guys. Do you have one more?
One more. I thought it was interesting that the high school pointed out vaping and phone use or electronic use. Hopefully there's something that, you know, we're seeing other districts having, their high schoolers are also mentioning those things as being some issues in the school. And so hopefully that's something that can be addressed as well. So I love that we had some really positive things and some things we can improve on. Excellent, excellent report.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a presentation on Avid with lots of people. Ms. Hayden, Ms. Mendez Chabra, Chamba, sorry. Our Columbia Heights High School senior student. Ms. Gardner with teacher, teaching and learning. Hi, welcome.
Good evening Chair Granland, members of the board and Superintendent Stenvik. I'm here this evening with Darcy Hadine, who's a high school teacher at Columbia Heights High School and teaching math in Avid. And we are also here with a student, Fernanda Mendez, who's going to share a little bit more about her experience. We are here with an Avid program update. So our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools is of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our presentation tonight aligns with all of our core values, which are also aligned with the Board of Education Equity Statement. This is an informational presentation with no governance. So Avid's mission is closely aligned with our own mission in Columbia Heights. So Avid's mission is to close the opportunity gap by preparing all students for college and career readiness and success in a global society. That part got cut off when we downloaded this. And Avid is not just in Columbia Heights Public Schools. It's an organization that is celebrating its forty-fifth anniversary this year. It started in one classroom in California and has since spread to be an education nonprofit that is in over eight thousand schools across the country and in Canada and Australia. So we're talking about Avid in Columbia Heights, but it is a larger organization as well. So Avid in Columbia Heights started in two thousand eight with one class at the high school. We've now expanded quite a bit, so we have eight sections of the Avid elective, two sections at each grade level in grades nine through twelve. And then we also have the Avid elective at Columbia Academy. So we had two sections this year of sixth, seventh grade, one section of seventh grade and two sections of eighth grade. And then in addition to that Avid elective that students participate in, teachers are also using Avid strategies school-wide. And then at Value View, North Park and Highland, again, Avid is school-wide. So there's not like a special Avid class or group, but teachers are using Avid strategies throughout the day in all classes. Avid in Columbia Heights is funded by the Achievement and Integration Program. So some highlights about Avid, and I was happy to see it show up on the list from students also. Avid provides students with a comprehensive curriculum that's grounded in WICER. Avid is big on acronyms, so WICER stands for Writing Inquiry Collaboration Organization in Reading. And students in the Avid elective have group tutoring, college campus visits and career exploration opportunities. And we also have data that shows that students who are enrolled in the Avid elective have higher attendance rates, increased enrollment and rigorous coursework and higher high school graduation rates and acceptance to and enrollment in post-secondary opportunities. So some updates about Avid at Columbia Academy. Again, we have two sixth grade, one seventh and two eighth grade sections. We had a total of one hundred and nine students in the Avid elective at CA this year. And again, higher overall rates of attendance and participation in honors and advanced courses. A highlight this year was that they participated in Finance Park through junior achievement. So that has a curriculum that goes along with it and then culminates in a field trip where students have a full day kind of immersive experience where they learn about money and have a job assigned to them and there's a mayor. So that they named as a highlight this year. And then we were also able, a silver lining of the redact requirements for elementary where that we were really able to focus on some secondary Avid professional development this year. So all Columbia Academy teachers who are not completing redact required training were able to participate in four days of Avid training. So they had four days of academic language and literacy, asset-based instruction for all classrooms. And then on the afternoons of those in-service days, had application time to right away start planning for how they were going to implement their Avid learning. So some pictures of that field trip to Finance Park. They even get to practice being parents and seeing the financial implications of that. Yeah, it was a fun and exciting day. All right, and then some updates about Avid at Columbia Heights High School. So again, two sections at each grade level. We had a total of one hundred and eighty-six students in the Avid elective this year. There was a really strong Avid site team that met monthly around their school-wide goals of post-secondary readiness, community activities and academic language and literacy. Students took field trips for college visits to several institutions, including Minnesota State University Mankato, the University of Wisconsin O'Clare, St. Cloud State, University of Minnesota Twin Cities and Dunwoody. Avid eleven and twelve students had the opportunity to attend a national college fair. And then our high school teachers also participated in that Avid training. We had two separate groups, we had facilitators with the high school and facilitators with Columbia Academy teachers. So again, over those four in-service days, they were able to participate in professional development around academic language and literacy. So we've got some photos from some of the field trips that they took. I think that might be a student we saw earlier in one of the pictures there. There's some photos from, oh, again, another student that we saw earlier. Eleventh and twelfth grade students at the National College Fair. And then Avid eleven students also participated in an e-Mentor program with United Health Group. So they virtually met with a mentor throughout the year and then had the opportunity to actually go to United Health, meet their mentor in person and take a tour of the facilities there. I'm going to pass it to Ms. Hadine to share some information about our seniors.
All right, good evening Chair Granland, hello, school board members. Good evening Superintendent, sorry Superintendent Stenvik. Thank you for having us here tonight. So we are kind of wrapping up the school year. We spent a lot of time this year getting everyone ready to apply to college and well, really just talking about all different aspects of what to expect in the fall. So one of the traditions that we passed down from the seniors to who's coming next, we take these senior photographs. And if you're ever in the high school, swing by the Avid room and you can check out the senior wall. So those pictures that are currently there will soon be replaced with all of these pictures. And these students were very excited about grabbing their flag early, taking their picture early. So this is what we have so far, but we have a lot more to come. And part of what we do, we apply to a lot of scholarships. In the fall, we applied to a lot of schools. So just an update, so far, this was as of last week on, I think Friday is when I updated. So so far, seniors have applied to two hundred and thirty-two college scholarships and counting. And over about two point three million dollars in scholarships thus far. So, and that is not including the FAFSA or the Dream Act. All right, and with that, I will pass it over to one of our exemplar Avid students. She is a future AGI, she is a Wallin Scholar and her name is Fernanda Mendez Chamba.
Good evening, members of the school board. Thanks for having me today. And this is like a small presentation about me. So I came from Ecuador three years ago. I am the only child in my family. I live here with my parents and I grew up with nine cousins. And I always enjoy singing and belong to the choir school since I was five years old. Part of my school educa, high schools, high school education is like right now I'm a senior here at CHH. And my favorite classes were choir and English. And least favorite classes were health and math. Some activities that I did through all my three years in here was theater, speech, soccer, lacrosse, key club. And this year I got a job as well. Some shout-outs to my parents who always are supporting me to achieve my goals as well as my family that is in Ecuador. But we always keep in contact, keep in touch with them. And my teachers who always supported me and pushing me out of my comfort zone. And they always told me like, when I came here, I didn't know any English at all. So they always pushed me to, that not knowing English wasn't a barrier to try some new activities, to open up, to get to know people. And it made me feel more comfortable being here in the country and my first high school in the USA. So it was like a nice experience having all these people supporting me. And yeah, and how Avid has helped me. Well, they actually helped me a lot because in Ecuador it's like a totally different thing, college and stuff like that. So I didn't know anything about a college in here. I thought it was something like look for a college, pick, register for that and that's it. But I was wrong, totally wrong. And then Avid taught me about a lot of college, like what things to look in a good college. It prepared me for the SAT, the ACT. They also like pushed me to apply to a lot of scholarships. And one of the most important to me was like the SMART goals. Because like I realized how powerful is like when you write down goals. And I remember this activity that we have in Avid, like at the beginning of every year, we write down some goals that we want to achieve through the high school year. So, and then at the end of the year, they gave us back this sheet of paper with all our goals. And I was, and it was just satisfaction when I saw that I did many of these goals. I achieved all of these and it was like a good experience for me. And problem solving, when we get to the TRF, the tutorials and we get a chance with our peers to work in homework and to help each other and also learn from other classrooms that we have like environmental science, ARCC classes, AP classes, and we help each other together. And also like volunteering, where I feel like I learned a lot of things doing volunteering. And also Avid helped me to stay organized with all my folders for each class. And also important to learn how to take notes. So I know in college it's really important. My plans for the next four years is hopefully obtain my bachelor's degree. And hopefully, right now I'm undecided in what I want to major in. But one of my options are like music or business administration. And my other goal was to buy a nice car. Something is in my bucket list, the most important to me is like hopefully I learn to speak Portuguese. Travel to Argentina and hopefully I can travel to Ecuador and see my family. Some strengths and skills that I developed through all these years. It's, I consider myself a good singer, good at sports, good listener as well. I got a lot of discipline, persistence and attention to detail. And things that I enjoy, again, singing is my passion, playing guitar, exploring new places and going to buffet. Well, thank you, thank you for your time. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. Board members, do you have any questions, comments for our Avid update? Jessica?
Thank you very much for the presentation and Fernanda, thank you for being here. I think it's so awesome to be able to hear firsthand from a student and hear how the Avid program has helped you hone in on, you know, your skills and your goals and be able to, you know, see the accomplishment as you check those goals off. I think that's wonderful. We've had Avid presentations in the past and at least in my time on the board, we haven't had a student as part of that presentation. So just thank you for making the time to be here and share that experience with us. Chair Granland, I do have a couple of questions though. If I could just continue for the other presenters. So just a couple of things, I'm just interested in learning a little bit more about Avid sort of across the different levels in the district. And one common piece you talked about sort of a shared academic language. And I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit about sort of, I guess the connection between that shared academic language throughout Avid and then as you're preparing students for like post-secondary careers, like how some of that shared language, like how do you connect students with bringing that shared academic language into a post-secondary environment, if that makes sense? I guess, put another way, I think like there's a certain, there's a certain like knowledge, right, about what it means to go to college, attend college, like navigate the college environment. And I know Avid does a lot to prepare students for, you know, functioning organization, that shared academic language in that context. So just trying to understand.
Yeah, so the forties of professional development that staff engaged in around academic language and literacy was really about creating common language structures for students across classes. So things like how do we have common sentence frames? How do we start class with a scholar starter that engages students in all four domains of language? So really creating some common practices that students would then see to support language across content areas. So that was really the focus of the professional development. And then also within the Avid elective, there is a lot of building of opportunity knowledge of, as Fernanda was saying, like what does it mean to go through a college application process? And what are the skills that you need to have in order to be ready to go study for a test? And I don't know if you want to share anything more about like the Avid elective component of opportunity knowledge and...
Kind of like tutorials?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So yeah, we we do tutorials like Fernanda said, and that's kind of, that's that helps to develop those study skills. Like, okay, so here's what I know about my question, here here was what my question was in the first place. I know I can work it up to this step and then I get stuck here. So then we all just kind of collaborate on that piece. And then, yeah, just try to work to get to the answer to that question. And with those things, you know, like the your paragraph essays, we spend the fall writing those essays for those college applications. We focus on writing scholar essays for the local scholarship application. So we do really focus on that writing piece and we spend a lot of time with the application process. And we we did implement some of those, some of those strategies, things like Socratic seminar from that training. And the what's the the two lines?
Oh, lines of communication.
Lines of communication, there we go. So we implement some of those strategies within the avid class.
Thank you so much. And then I also just had a question about incorporation of avid, you know, across the elementary schools. How do we talk about those avid strategies or what our students are learning with parents and families of elementary schoolers?
Yeah, so at the elementary level, a lot of it is around organization, right? So how do you use a planner and kind of get used to looking ahead and setting goals? So the planner, I think at most of our schools is something that goes back and forth between home and school. Sometimes it's a folder depending on the grade level. So that is something that is shared with parents. And then with our new wit and wisdom curriculum, there's actually a lot of avid pieces that are built in. And that was actually something we talked about today is that we really need to to point out when those strategies are avid strategies. So they're doing Socratic seminars and taking notes and just calling out that those those are avid also, so.
And then you mentioned the impressive number of scholarships that the avid students are applying for. Can you tell us a little bit about how we, how the avid program supports students in applying for those scholarships?
So we, I have posted some databases that help out with scholarships. So that's, that's a big place that I go to. I tell them once they're more focused in on what school they want to go to, they should go directly to the source, go to your school, check out what opportunities exist there. And let's see, we also, we do spend a lot of time writing that essay for the local scholarship. And I think we had, let's see, did we? We had talked about also for next year, hopefully doing some kind of fair, like with college representatives present who can also help us with that as well.
Great, thank you so much. I guess no other questions, I just wanted to say that I have really appreciated as a parent seeing some of those avid strategies taught to two of my three kids so far going through the schools here, especially around like organization and breaking down projects. And I've seen that with my current elementary schooler, but I also currently have a seventh grader who's in avid. And being able to see his growth across those things in his time in avid has been really, really wonderful. So thank you for all of the work that goes into training and and implementing that program, thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
So Fernanda, I really enjoyed your presentation. It reminds me of, of, you know, when you think about the most successful people in the world, they all have SMART goals, they all write them down. A lot of times they have a vision board where they lay out exactly what they want to do in their life and put those pictures up so that every day it reminds them, that's what I'm trying to get to. And so I'm excited that you involved with the avid program because it sounds like that's exactly what they're helping you do. And lay out that vision as well as, you know, just making you overall successful just by applying those tools that you learned. So I just want you to know that that is a big deal to lay that out for yourself and and keep it in front of you. Don't put it away, once you lay down your SMART goals, you don't put it away and never look at it because you won't achieve it. You gotta have it in front of you and that little presentation can be your vision board. I just wanted to say that because it's, I've I've done my own research in that area and and I think it's it's an excellent program and I'm glad you're a part of it.
Thank you very much for the presentation, I think it's fantastic. And Ms. Gartner, I remember when avid expanded to Valley View. And it's wonderful to see how how it's grown and expanded within our school community and knowing that we were really sort of on the forefront of that. Having it in our, in elementary schools and knowing that now it is not only just national, it is international. And so thank you for your work with that and making it accessible for all of our students. I have two questions, my first one is, how are students identified or how do they enroll into avid?
So there is kind of a like a profile of a typical avid student, but avid is really for all different types of students. So often, but not always, they may be the first in their family to attend college, typically kind of in the academic middle, right? So maybe in need of some additional support, but not again, not always. So both of our avid coordinators, we have a teacher who serves as an avid coordinator at both the middle and high school, kind of lead those recruitment efforts. So students are recommended by teachers and or apply on their own. At Columbia Academy this year, they actually started a golden ticket program where students were able to recommend other students who then go through the application process. For our incoming sixth graders, so current fifth graders, there's a survey that goes out to teachers to identify students who they think would be a good fit. And then I go around to all the schools and meet with those students and send them home with an application. So it's a combination of teachers identifying those students who they think would be a good fit and then students self identifying and applying for the program.
Awesome, thank you. And then my second question is actually for Fernanda, were you Fiona in the Shrek play? Because you, that was the one, like that picture was up there, that was the one thing that you didn't touch on and I was like, that's Fiona.
Yeah, I did the, what is the winter play? The Shrek the musical and I got the role for Fiona.
You were delightful in that, let me just say. It was very memorable, obviously, because I recognize it. So yeah, thank you and thank you for the presentation tonight too. And again, just like when we were talking with students that were here earlier and our student school board rep, this is, this is helpful for us. And it is so heartwarming to know that the policies and the things that we do here are able to, like how it touches all of our students and our staff. And this is just an amazing example of all of that hard work. So thank you for everything, thank you for being here tonight and we're so proud of of you and all of your accomplishments. And thank you to our teachers.
Can I ask one more question? I'm really sorry, I know you went already, but it just popped in my head. I was curious because you mentioned field trips and I was just going to ask like what type of field trips do they go?
So usually they're either college visits or like a career opportunity visit. So and we try to do something at every, at every grade level so that they really get a wide range of, you know, from Dunwoody to Finance Park all the way to like the University of Minnesota. So they really get a wide range of what their future opportunities could look like.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up we have Director Hennekenz to talk about the Northeast Metro 916 Long Term Facility Maintenance Plan.
All right, thank you Chair Granland, members of the board and Superintendent Stenbik. Give me a second here to find the right one. Okay. So these should look familiar to everyone on the board. Annually, we have our long-term facility maintenance plans in June that need to be approved by the school board in order for the school districts to receive funding. We're a member of 916, so one of the things that we have to do is approve a resolution for their portion of the plan, for their plan. As we fund part of it and I'll include that information in the presentation. So our mission Columbia Heights Public Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values of community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage and innovation. All aligning with our Board of Education equity statement. So this isn't governance tonight, but it'll come back to the school board at the next school board meeting on June 10th as an action item for approval. So I'm going to go through the long-term facility maintenance plan in in for this next year for 916 in each category. So again, not a significant change from before and I'll go over the exact total dollar amount we're talking about at the end. So we have our health and safety category within long-term facility maintenance. So you can see our expenses there, physical hazards, $38,650, other hazardous materials, $1,4500. Environmental safety management, 916 engages in a, in a group just like we do or a vendor, like we do for our health and safety management. Ours happens to be IEA, so their their expense there $95,800. Asbestos durable encapsulation, not surprising, they have newer buildings that they don't have any incurred inspect expenses there. Fire safety $26,450 and indoor air quality $12,500. So a total in the health and safety category of $187,900. And then within the other category of long-term facility maintenance, more in the deferred maintenance area, we have building envelope, $21,500. Building hardware and equipment $4,000. Nothing in electrical interior surfaces, so flooring, casework, I mean walls, painting $179,700. Mechanical $40,000, again newer buildings, so not surprising that their expenses are a little bit lower there. Plumbing zero, professional service salary zero, roof systems $14,000, so just repairs on roofs. Site projects $20,000. And then the total deferred capital expenses of $279,200 for a total of their 26 FY '26 tenure plan of $467,100. So that's just the one-year snapshot, this, the plans are a 10-year plan. So in the action item, their full 10-year plan with a 10-year grid will be in the board packet showing the rest of it. So but here we're just focusing on this year and that's what the resolution language includes for for their plan. So I believe the resolution is attached to the agenda tonight. So that's the resolution that the board will need to approve, to approve the 916, our portion of the 916 Long Term Facility Maintenance Plan. So our our portion of it is based on, you know, our enrollment into 916. So we're up at 3.6% of the portion of the capital or the long-term facility maintenance plan. So $21,286.53 is our portion of it. And again, that varies slightly from year to year. I think last year we had 3.5% of the of the portion, this year it's 3.6%. So not a significant change, just a slight increase in the plan. And as something that was mentioned before is, you know, this is the projects that are managed through 916. And we do have a board member that sits on that board and sees those projects. And and so, you know, monitors what what those, what the projects are happening through this plan. So questions?
Michelle?
I'll go with a simple one, what is building envelope?
Building envelope is so outside of the building, you know, so like windows, windows are included in the building envelope. So that, yeah, that outside part of the building is the is the building envelope.
Thank you.
Brick tuck pointing, some exciting things for everybody. For some more exciting than avid, but I don't think many. So.
All right, good question, did you have a question?
I had one, but I figured it out.
Okay, all right.
The math wasn't working for me.
What, you were checking the math?
The treasurer, what? Go ahead, Jessica.
I have a question, but I just wanted to note for anyone watching, I know you, Director Hennekenz, you had mentioned this sort of in the introduction. But just to be very clear, we're gonna, we're going to hear more about the Columbia Heights Public School District's long-term
Yes.
Facility Maintenance Plan in the next agenda item. But to be clear, this is talking about our proportionate share of Metro 916's
Yes.
Long-term Facility Maintenance Plan. So I just want to be clear, it's going to, I don't know, just because we're hearing both on the same night for anybody watching. And I did just want to note too that in the resolution, let's see, on number three, it actually lays out how the proportionate share for Columbia Heights is calculated. So if anybody is interested in that, it's laid out there, so thank you.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that, it can be confusing.
My, my question is about the rise in cost of materials and things. How, how does this plan sort of address that? Like the the possibility and right now sort of the fluctuation in the market for materials?
Yes, anybody's plan has to deal with that. And for the most part, things that are happening in this next year and fiscal year '26, we we've already, we're already well into the plan. For example, for us, we have a roof bid that went out last fall. And I don't, you know, it's a bid out project, you know, I don't anticipate any unless there's something in the roof that we didn't know about when we put the project together that the expenses are going to affect that. But you know, some of the smaller projects, of course it can, it's just something that we have to continue to deal with. But for the most part, you know, we're well into that for this next fiscal year, so we know where we're at. Most school districts, and we are now one of them finally, do have a positive balance in long-term facility maintenance that will allow us to account for any fluctuations on a smaller scale, but we have it there. So because in the past we just didn't, we didn't have a balance there and it was tough for us to account for any kind of fluctuations. So it's a growing concern tariffs, anything that, you know, I swear the conversation just makes the prices go up. So it doesn't actually have to happen, it's just the conversation that causes them to go up. So yes, we're all, we're dealing with it, but at least for the short term, you know, the plans are positioned appropriately. It's the long-term where they get a little unknown and you're making your best guess on, you know where you need to go, but on the actual total costs, once we get closer, we'll know.
Thank you very much for that.
Yep.
Julie?
So now my math is still not working. So is our portion of the $655,000 that is totaled here 3.6 or 3.2?
Percentage?
Because if it's 3.6, we would owe more.
So, okay, so yes, you're not wrong in that. So it, and it's in the resolution, so the total amount that they're levying is $597,600. The total amount that they're expensing out is $467,100, yes.
Thank you.
So I should have been clear on that, that's a good question.
I just couldn't figure it out.
Yes, that is why.
Fantastic, Jessica?
I support this resolution, but just so we understand, what happens if this board or another member board does not approve the 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 plan?
It's a good question, I'd have to get exact detail on that, but we are a member of 916 and this is the plan that the membership. So I think that would be a conversation about our membership with 916. Because, you know, the buildings, you know, are built based on the membership, the district's membership. And some of us remember, and Laura, I'm just going to leave it to you to answer that a little bit more, but some of us remember the ties as an organization and the assets that ties had. And we were a member of ties and and so we have ownership over those assets in a way, or liability of those assets in a way. So it it comes down to our, 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 not our participation, but our membership with 916. So it's, it's not, it's not as easy as a choice of that.
Thank you.
Laura?
I think I might address this, so far it hasn't happened yet. Everybody at 916 and the members are very supportive of, you know, of of making sure that the buildings are well maintained, you know, because we sure that the buildings are well-maintained, you know, because we do actually have a financial interest in maintaining those buildings, and we do own a portion of those buildings and those facilities. So, but from what I do understand is if one of the districts did not, then it wouldn't be able to go through. So it would be, it would be a problem.
So it would go back to the nine sixteen players?
They would all have, everybody does have to approve, all of the districts do have to approve it. It was one of the difficulties with trying to get some sort of a referendum done, is because all of the districts would have had to have passed the referendum, because nine sixteen does not have any type of levying authority.
Right, it's just the member districts that do.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of, it's its own, it's kind of its own, it, it is, it is a true collaboration, you know, it requires, it requires the cooperation of all of the, all of the member districts to be able to function.
Great.
Thank you.
So, thank you. So if nine sixteen did not use our funding, our funds correctly or appropriately, our monitoring process is because we have a person from our board as a part of their board? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Like if we, is that how we monitor that nine sixteen does with?
Just like we're bringing things to you for our projects, like our roof. And, you know, we're going through the bid process of that. Their staff are bringing it to the nine sixteen board in the same way.
It's, it's very similar. It's, it's the same but different, you know, it's kind of one of those, kind of, because it's, it's kind of a slightly bigger picture because of how the funding mechanism works and stuff, but it's similar presentations.
In general, that the public understands that we're not just giving this money over to some other organization and don't have any way of monitoring whether or not they're using those funds in the way they're expected to be used. So this is how I'm trying to communicate to our community that there is some monitoring process to ensure that that, that funds are being, you know, used appropriately.
I, I would actually go one step further too, because I do know that there's a lot of collaboration with our finance directors and our other directors as well.
We meet monthly.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a lot of.
Perfect, thank you.
Superintendent Stenbik?
Not to belabor the point, but yes, there are multiple checks and balances. The finance directors meet monthly, but so do also the special education directors, so do the superintendents meet regularly, and so there's, there's multiple layers of monitoring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, don't go anywhere, because you were up next again, with our, with the long-term facility maintenance plan for our school district directly.
So, very similar presentation, just a little bit more information. So, again, our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, and our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. So, again, this is an informational presentation tonight, and there's, so there's no governance, but it'll be back to the board on June 10th. This portion of the conversation with long-term facility maintenance is something that we've already started with the board back earlier this year, and when we're talking about that indoor air quality project at Valley View. So we've had some very lengthy discussions around that project and how the funding mechanism comes through long-term facility maintenance. And you'll see that reflected in this plan now today. In the nine sixteen plan, we're looking at one year, we're looking at twenty twenty-six. And, and the presentation in ours, I look at three years, I look at the current year, I look at next year, and then I look at the future year. So we're looking at three years. In that presentation, again, when it comes to action item, you'll get the full ten-year, one-sheet official Minnesota Department of Education plan. Again, you know, those future years, as we discussed, are, are tough, because, you know, we have ideas of where we're going. We're going mechanical, we're going to roofs, we're going to mechanical, we're going to interior surfaces, we know we're going to these things. Sometimes they get pushed back a little bit because of, you know, funding, cost increases in some areas, and sometimes we can move them up a little bit. So, and sometimes priorities change. Like, you know, we have a, a roof or a wall that's leaking completely, and we need to do brick tuck pointing and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars there. So things can happen, that's why, you know, the state, even though we have to approve a ten-year plan, doesn't focus too much on that nine and ten years, because that's looking way too far out. So again, looking at our category one, health and safety items, same as what we looked in the previous presentation. I'm just going to look at the twenty twenty-six, the twenty twenty-seven are there. And so in our area, we see physical has, physical hazards are, you know, things that we have on the roof to help protect people from falling off the roof are one of the things for physical hazards, so railings that we put up there. So there's an example, but, so we have forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two there. Our other hazardous materials of eighteen thousand, so hazardous materials we need to, again, get rid of in the district, whether they be from science rooms or from the buildings and grounds, the shop, eighteen thousand, five forty. Again, our, our environmental health and safety management, I mentioned it before, eighty-four thousand, eight seventy-two. Asbestos removal, we do asbestos removal every year, it just depends on the volume. So we're always doing it, we will, we, we always keep twenty-five thousand in the budget for there, because we're always doing it. If a project comes up and we need to do more, we do more with that project. So an example of that, I think in twenty twenty-six, which we just don't know yet, we're in that planning phase of where that's going to be, that's built into the indoor air quality numbers of an allotment for asbestos abatement. But that's something that we, we assume will spike there a little bit because of, of that project. Fire safety, forty-one thousand, two hundred. And then our indoor air quality, not category two, seven thousand, five hundred dollars. So a total in the health and safety category one of two hundred and twenty-two, twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four. So the next part is the category two, health and safety. So when we presented to the board, we talked about, you know, the board approved categories for levy authority, which are asbestos removal, fire safety, and indoor air quality. And again, with the Valley View project, as in its title, Valley View Indoor Air Quality Project, we are accessing the indoor air quality. So this number here is the, the total cost of allowable levy for this project, based on the scope of work. Again, this is something that, once his LTFM plan is approved by the school board, MDE will still follow up with approval for the project overall. We've already worked with the state on the project, and we know that they're in agreeance with the, the project as it stands and the scope of work for the project. So it's, you know, this, at this point, we truly believe it's a formality of the approval process, but it first takes action by the board before MDE will officially say, yes, approved. So again, for twenty twenty-six, full amount of fourteen million, five hundred thousand is the total of category two health and safety projects under three sixty-six indoor air quality. And then it brings us to our deferred maintenance category. Again, building envelope, thirty thousand, not anticipating too much work, you can see that we're going to jump up in a future year there. And that's after we get done with our, that bird just flying the window. After we get through one more year of roof, major roof work, I'm just going to power through that bird hitting the window. And, and so, building hardware and equipment, you know, doors, repairs that we have throughout the district, electrical, we don't have a lot as we move forward. Once we get into bigger projects in the future in the buildings, we may see more of that. Interior surfaces, again, flooring, a hundred thousand. Mechanical systems, I mean, we have a great need in mechanical, we know we do. We've been allocating more of our dollars in, in deferred maintenance into roofs, trying to get caught up on our roof systems. Obviously, keeping the water out is important. And so, you know, it's a balancing act, but we believe that we've hit that mark now. It took us an extra year, but we believe we hit that mark now so that going forward, we can divert the deferred maintenance dollars, again, into the mechanical system, so you can see a big jump in twenty twenty-seven, or in the far column, in mechanical. So roof systems, again, you see that drop dramatically, because now we're just into maintaining the roofs that we have for a couple of years. And then site projects, not planning on anything there. So a total of deferred of one million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, and then you can see the total expenditures at that fifteen, eight, sixteen, nine, eight, seventy-four because of that indoor air quality large project, that one-time, one-time hit. So again, I, I mentioned a couple of these already, summer twenty twenty-five main projects, we have our Columbia Academy roof work, we're doing three sections of roof there. It's just under a million dollars for those three sections, so it's not even the whole building, it's close to half maybe. And it puts us in a good place, we feel at this point, with our roofs moving forward. And we continue to do our district-wide mechanical work. And it's a never-ending project of, it's hot, it's cold, and, or it's not working at all. District-wide casework and flooring, our buildings definitely aren't brand-new buildings. So, you know, things have held up very well, we've maintained a lot of it very well, so, and, you know, like our terrazzo flooring will last forever, but it's not all terrazzo flooring. So there's definitely, you know, work that needs to be done there. And as we're moving through the flooring projects, we are looking at focusing on areas that still have potentially asbestos tile underneath the, underneath the carpet, and so we're taking care of that at the same time through these projects. And then in twenty twenty-six, this is where we hit into that brick tuck pointing, you know, interestingly enough, you know, you have a brick building and, you know, it does last, but eventually that mortar starts to break down in between the bricks and allow the water to come in, and you start having water problems, and you do need to re-tuck point. A few years ago, we had to do a project at Columbia Academy, because every time it rained, it rained into the locker rooms downstairs. So they do come up. We're going to continue on the casework and flooring throughout the district, and of course, the Valley View Indoor Air Quality Project is the big one, starting in twenty twenty-six with approval of, of the long-term facility maintenance plan. Questions?
Great presentation. Questions? Jessica?
Can you talk generally about how our planned deferred maintenance expenditures compare with our deferred maintenance needs as a district?
Sure. So in, we know it's higher now, but in, in, you know, about a, well, twenty, twenty twenty-one, I think, is when we did a mechanical, we brought in a mechanical vendor, and we did a mechanical study district-wide. And at that point, the deferred maintenance needs in our mechanical systems district-wide was about forty-six million dollars. So obviously, we're quite a few years after that, and, and so that number is growing. I think currently, you know, we're more estimated into the eighty-ish million dollars. So the deferred maintenance needs on our mechanical systems are great. You know, some of our air handlers in our buildings, and again, that's the air handler itself pushing air, are original to the buildings. I mean, there's been things that have been replaced on those units, but they're original to the buildings. So, you know, we have areas where we're grandfathered in as, as far as what they're producing, what MERV rating the filters have, you know, they're, we're grandfathered in, the units can't achieve a higher one, but if we put in a new unit, the standard is, you know, not nine, it's, you know, thirteen or fifteen now. I think it's thirteen still, but, so, you know, we're, we're below that. So, you know, there's a lot of need there. And so when we receive long-term facility maintenance dollars, very happy for them, we haven't received them for very long, it was, I think, twenty sixteen when we first started receiving those dollars. You know, for those deferred projects, you saw we had about one point one million dollars. And so, you know, in twenty twenty-one, we received about one point one million dollars, but yet we had forty-six plus million dollars in deferred needs. So we can't catch up in that, with that funding, and we just can't. We can't keep up, we can't catch up, we're just always going to keep getting further and further behind. So thus the need for these more larger, major projects. And right now, we have a mechanism with long-term facility maintenance to really address this and, and focus on indoor air quality. And so, you know, we, we, at this point, looked at our building with highest needs, that was in the presentation that you guys received previously, and that was Valley View Elementary, by far had the highest needs. And overwhelming with the building's deferred needs, it was HVAC that was, was significantly at the top of that list. So those are, you know, that was our, kind of our process for it, and focusing on that building to start, because it was at by far highest need.
Thank you, I really appreciate that explanation. I know that this presentation is not specifically about the Valley View project, but I think that information that we've discussed as a board is important, because it underpins the need for that project, but also doing what we can to make progress on deferred maintenance as a whole, particularly around mechanical systems, and thinking about how we can approach our indoor air quality needs amongst other deferred maintenance needs going forward. I think hearing you talk about being grandfathered in on some of our systems, I mean, I'm certainly glad that we are, so we can continue to operate, but that's, you know, a concern, because we're not able to, to, to meet sort of the current standards when it comes to indoor air quality and other things. So I, I, I just appreciate that explanation, because as we're, as we're making decisions as a board around some of these larger deferred maintenance projects, people might have questions about that, so I think that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Director Henning? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will see you back here on the tenth for the vote.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Jake Henderson, our activities director, who's talking to us with an update on our activities. Welcome, Director Henderson.
Hello, is mine up here, Stephanie, or do I need to?
Oh, shoot.
It's all right, I got a, I've got a flash drive with it on. Just in case.
Backup on backup.
Now you can call him Henning again. He's earned it.
Nice work.
Well, I don't know, I made mistakes too, as I was reading this, because I looked at my activities winter update, and this is spring, but it is all spring. So Chair Granland, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik, thank you all for having me up here again. Just planning on giving you a brief spring update on our activities, and then we'll be talking about the Minnesota State High School League. Our mission in Columbia Heights is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong and all succeed. The short presentation this evening will feature all of our core values here, as happens often. As I stated, this is just an informational presentation, we will talk about an action item here in a moment after the spring update on the Minnesota State High School League, so stay tuned for that. As we did with just the, the fall and the winter, we focused on all of these aspects in our spring activities as well, community, being as competitive as possible, creating a positive culture, and, and then just looking out and being mindful of wellness across the board, mental, physical, emotional wellness. Our participation numbers, as we like to share with you, and then I'll throw, I also have a couple of pictures, because I don't have a slideshow for y'all tonight, just in the interest of time, but I know that's kind of the most fun part. But if you want to just take a moment and take a look at some of our participation numbers throughout the spring, I'll highlight a couple of numbers on there, just some brand-new things. Flag football at the middle school, girls' flag football in particular, was a new sport for us, very well-attended and lots of participants. They just had a, two games tonight against White Bear Lake Middle School. They came out with a tie in the first game, and then a win in the second game, so that's exciting. And then I'll highlight boys volleyball for you as well, that's a brand-new sport here up at the high school. Unfortunately, their season ended today against Brooklyn Center in our section. Unfortunately, uh, their season ended today, uh, against Brooklyn Center in our section. I was hoping maybe to get over there, but it was a little bit quicker than I had hoped. So, um, but also a really fun, exciting season. I know I saw many of you at some of those events too. Um, and then the best part is some of our highlights. Let me find my paperwork here, but, uh, I've got some pictures. I know that you all, uh, spoke with Tamoye, uh, tonight, but really exciting that we had a state, uh, champion in our midst for speech. And, uh, we also had four or three others go to state in speech too. So really exciting there. Um, and those three others are coming back. They are not seniors. So that's really, really awesome. Um, and I think we, we placed second, right, in the Tri-Metro two in speech? So, um, exciting there. Our entire Synchro team, uh, went to state this past week at the U of M. So exciting stuff for that as well. They are perennial state participants and, um, not often though, do we get all participants going to state. So that's really exciting. We are hopeful that we've got some more state participants possibly, or hopefully in track and field. We've got that competition going, uh, for sections on Wednesday and Friday of this week. I already highlighted that we had our first inaugural seasons for both boys volleyball and girls' flag football. We hosted the Tri-Metro Jazz Festival and Art Festival. Uh, we hosted the Jazz the previous year, but we added the Art Festival to it this year and we had great, uh, participation among the schools. Um, and our own Isaac Glidden, uh, was kind of, uh, steering that as the, the high school teacher and got several more participants than we've had in the past. So that was exciting. We hosted a unified basketball tournament here in the Highlander Center, maybe about a month ago. I'm blanking on the exact date, but really exciting, uh, opportunity for not only for our students, but also for students, um, in several other schools participating in that. And, uh, just awesome ways to see our kids participate, but also really step up in leadership opportunities. And then we had several artists, uh, receive high, uh, some of the highest scores in the Minnesota State High School League, um, for, for their visual art pieces. And so, you know, this is often overlooked piece of, oh, the high school league, you know, just does sports, but we've got speech, um, and we've got fine arts as well. And, um, so the visual art pieces are also judged. And, uh, so we often have some, um, some really amazing pieces, but, uh, this year we had three that scored the highest. And so, uh, super, super exciting for that too. And there's probably other things, but I, I kept it to a rather short list. Uh, we also have a, a lot of opportunities coming up in the summer, uh, more than we have had, uh, in the past. We've got dance coming back again. Um, we've got several tennis opportunities. We've got theater and triple threat opportunities, which we have not had in the past. And then we've, uh, changed some of the swimming opportunities and basketball and strength camp opportunities. So, um, a lot of opportunities for our kids to just continue to stay engaged, build some of those, uh, skills and then also grow just as a community too. And that concludes my short, uh, spring update for y'all. Thank you.
All right. Questions? Jessica?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I really appreciate these, um, I don't know, quarterly seasonal updates, whatever, wherever, whenever we receive them. It's really great to see, um, I guess the diversity of athletics and activities offered to our students as well as, um, the participation rates of the students that take advantage of those opportunities. Um, I did just want to ask one question since, uh, we are on camera and there might be some folks listening. We did hear earlier today, um, from our student school representatives about, um, some feedback they got from students across the district. And one of the things that, um, we heard from, um, some of the students, I think at the middle school, student, school representatives, can correct me if I'm wrong, was, um, some concern over, um, the cost of activities. And I was just wondering if you could, um, just talk a little bit about what options there are for students and families for reduced activity fees and how they, how they can access those.
Sure. Um, and as you know, at least I think actually everybody around this table was here. We slightly did in, or we increased fees slightly last year, um, just trying to keep up with making some small incremental, um, adjustments to those fees, uh, over time. And so we did increase those fees a little bit. We do obviously have a sliding scale whether you, uh, receive educational benefits or not. And so, um, if you receive educational benefits, your cost is significantly less. For instance, if you're at the high school level, your cost, um, is $160. If you would receive, um, uh, I'm totally blanking, not free lunch, but, um,
Educational benefits?
Yes, um, reduced lunch status. Uh, you would get that, uh, same for $80 or, um, if you, or sorry, $50. And if you received free lunch, then you would get it for $25. Um, so that is always an option. Um, and it's lower at the middle school or if you're in activities as well. Um, and then we also, with all of our communications, if you want to apply for a scholarship, we always have that on there too. And both, uh, Mr. Opats at the middle school, um, and Wendy at the middle school, um, have communicated those things, uh, as well. And so I did take note of that, um, when I heard those things and I was like, okay, well, maybe we just need to make sure that those are being reiterated. Um, that it, that is an opportunity that they have. Um, and we have a scholarship form that families can fill out as well and we've never turned anyone away.
Thank you. I appreciate, um, I appreciate that and just so families know what their options might be because you and your team do such a good job of making sure that those opportunities are available to everyone. I think it's so important that, um, the, the cost of those activities is not a barrier to participation for any students. I know we have to support the, the cost of the programs overall, but just knowing that those options are there, I think is important. So thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for that. I was going to ask that question as well.
Beat you to it.
Yeah, you beat me to it. So I appreciate that. Um, I think, I wonder one part of that too might be that students may see that this is the cost and not go any further than that. And I wonder if that's, uh, again, like, are, how are we getting that message out so that kids are understanding? And so our students and families know that, yeah, this is the, this is the cost and also please, like, that doesn't have to be the end of the conversation. Um, and I think that that, you know, that just is, I know that that work's already being done and just thinking about it for other students too, especially since that was such a big thing for, that was mentioned. So I appreciate that. Julie?
Director Henderson, I noticed that, um, in your chart that several of the girls' teams have reduced girls' participation. Um, can you explain some of the, um, some of the reasons that could be impacted? Have you seen, noticed that? And how are we encouraging our girls to participate?
That's a good question. Um, I think overall, I would love to see all of these numbers jump up, uh, regardless of, um, what gender, uh, sport or activity it may be. I think girls across, across, if I take that in particular, um, that across the metro has, you know, significantly reduced. Um, a lot of our teams within our conference as well as, uh, just outside of our conference, uh, haven't been able to field the JV team. We've had a hard time, uh, also. Um, and my understanding is club has also reduced a little bit. And so, um, we've also had some turnover in some of those coaches where they've been leaving the, the school district unfortunately. And so when we see that high turnover, it's, it's hard to keep those students engaged. And then we don't have a, somebody that is a point person for that for a little while until we've hired someone else. So that in particular would be one. Um, softball, actually, while the numbers don't necessarily say it right here, our high school participation was really great. Um, we co-op with that in Fridley. And, um, I would say maybe in some of these other years too, our numbers are how many people actually sign up and not who, how many people actually stick with it. And I would say I was a little bit more of, this is actually who stuck with it this year. But a big percentage or a big chunk of that softball, maybe from last year, was our middle schoolers. Um, and now this year, uh, not only, we, we had roughly four, no, we had three middle schoolers playing on the middle school team that co-ops with Fridley. And we had, um, 19 high schoolers playing on the high school team and we were able to field three high school teams. And, uh, varsity JV and a C squad team. And so, um, doubled the length of those middle schoolers that were playing up of their season and they probably got quite a bit, uh, better in terms of the competition level that they were playing. So, um, the numbers, uh, don't necessarily look the same in softball there. In terms of synchronized swimming, again, um, that's staying relatively stable. There are 19 total synchronized swimming teams, I believe, in the, in the state. And so that is, uh, while we have a very, uh, and then some of these were also co-upping. Actually, all three of those sports that I highlighted were co-upping in those. And so those only, only are our numbers, not the numbers that we're bringing to the table from the other schools that we co-op with. That, uh, is a, is a very small sport overall. And so, um, we were happy to get some brand new students out. Um, I believe we've only got a couple of students graduating in that. And so it's exciting. We've got some great captains too that are looking to, uh, add to that team. In terms of what we're doing to try to highlight, um, some of our opportunities, um, we're taking that head on with some of our head coaches of, hey, we need to recruit from within where we're at. We need to offer opportunities for kids to learn about this, grow relationships with you. We also had a, unfortunately, the Athena banquet, or Athena luncheon was on the exact same day as our Women's Coaching Symposium that is offered by the University of Minnesota. So I wasn't able to, to attend, um, but I think we had eight coaches that did attend the Women's Coaching Symposium and they talk about aspects of this. There are quite a few things, um, for that. No, and I'm, I'm going a bit long, but, um, coaching her, um, is a curriculum that is an opportunity for our coaches to take. It's a free curriculum for, um, any issues, um, or opportunities to understand, um, about coaching girls and coaching women, especially for some of our coaches, um, that might be male and they're coaching women. We're also taking a look at what our uniforms look like and opportunities for, uh, students that may want, need or want to be more covered up than what our uniforms offer right now. I just sent, uh, messages to our, um, rep for, uh, tennis, et cetera. Um, we're taking a look at what that looks like in swimming and we're looking at period swimsuits, et cetera, for some of our girls so that, um, hopefully taking away some of those barriers that they might be in. So we're, we're taking a few in there. I, I do, uh, see the numbers and, um, our goal is that we increase all of those things. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I just want to add, uh, congrats to Dan Chow, who, uh, increased the record, beat the, the school record of 17.6 feet in the long jump by six inches. That's an amazing accomplishment as well.
And she's only a junior.
And she, yep. Oh, wow.
So she's got opportunities to, uh, she's gone to state multiple times before and we're excited for opportunities this year.
Yeah. Awesome. Yes, that's not, go ahead.
She's actually beat that record twice now, the 17.6.
Oh. Even more impressive. Thank you for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Yeah. Okay. Moving, moving on to our action items. So we have, um, the Minnesota State High School League Membership Resolution. That is a long one. Um, so I will read it and then I will ask for a motion and discussion. Sound good? Resolved that the governing board or entity of Columbia Heights High School, located in the state of Minnesota, delegates the control, supervision and regulation of interscalactic activities and athletics referred to in Minnesota Statute Section 128C dot 01 to the Minnesota State High School League and so hereby certifies to the State Commissioner of Education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Further resolved that the school listed is authorized by this, the governing board of said school district or school to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League and to participate in the approved interscalactic activities and athletics sponsored by said league and its various subdivisions. Further resolved that this governing board or entity hereby adopts the constitution, bylaws, policies, rules and regulations of said league and all the amendments thereto as the same as are published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook on file at the office of the school district or school or as appears on the league's website as the minimum standards governing participation in said league-sponsored activities and athletics. Further, the administration and responsibility for determining student eligibility and for the supervision of such activities and athletics are assigned to the official representatives identified by this governing board or bot, governing board or entity. Signing this resolution for membership affirms that this governing board has reviewed all required membership materials provided by the league, which defines the purpose and value of education-based activity and athletic and, uh, programs and defines each member school's responsibilities. Member schools must develop and publicize administrative procedures to address eligibility suspensions related to student code of responsibilities by law 206 dot 2, violations for students participating in activity and athletic programs by member schools. The above resolution was-
Chair Granland?
Yes.
You've read the resolution?
I have read it. Yeah. Yeah. That was the end of it. Cool. Can I get a motion to approve? Thank you, Laura. Can I get a second?
Second.
Michelle. Discussion. Great. No discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. Did not, I missed that.
If we don't, if we don't become, you know, involved with the MS HSL, um, or be in it, we can't compete against teams that are a part of the MS HSL. So it, it really is kind of like, do you want to have athletics or not? And I think that's probably what we want is athletics.
Thank you.
Laura? And from what I understand, this is really our only option. Yeah. And to be able to participate with other districts. Am I correct about this? It's the only game in town.
Yeah.
Literally the only game in town.
Pretty much. Um, I mean, it, it, it's 29 sports and activities that we, uh, are a part of in the Minnesota State High School League. And so most of what I just shared with you is done through the Minnesota State High School League.
So it would be awkward if we voted this down directly after your presentation? Is that what you're saying?
Right. We would not have fun things like what we started with at the beginning of this meeting if we did not. Yes.
All of our highlights would be gone.
Yep.
Let's continue our highlights.
So with that discussion, um, I believe we're ready for a roll call vote. Michelle, if you could do that for us, please.
Yes, yes. Who?
I.
My dearest.
I.
Oh, yes.
Yep. No, we did motion it. Sorry.
You're okay. Petway, I. Palmer?
I.
Granland?
I. All right. Um, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Curriculum update with, uh, Director Tuckrell and, um, Director, no, not Gartner, Ms. Gartner and, uh, Ms. Matasilvick. Guys, it's eight, it's 8:15.
It's been a long evening.
It's been a long, I apologize.
You did it though. Good work. Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Granland, members of the Board, Superintendent Stenbik. I'm here tonight with coordinators Gartner and Matasilvick to share more about the curriculum update and our recommendation. On May 13th, the Board was presented with information on the curriculum development process to analyze grades six through eight, English Language Arts and Math. The recommendation from the groups and committees is to seek approval of the adoption of Amplify for ELA for English Language Arts and Envision for Math. In addition, the Board was presented with a legislative requirement for personal finance course at the high school level. The recommendation would be to approve starting a personal finance course at Columbia Heights High School starting the 2025, 2026 school year.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. So we've already received that. Um, so, oh my goodness. Um, so we need to move forward with the approval of the adoption of the Envision, uh, six through eight math, Amplify ELA and the personal finance course. Can I get a motion?
It's a point of, a point of privilege. Just, we don't have the resol, or the motion, the, the recommended motion in our board book. So I'm just wondering, could you repeat that one more time? What our actual, what the, the recommended motion is? What our actual, what the, the recommended motion is?
Yes. The recommendation.
Oh, it is here.
Yeah.
I was looking at the next agenda item. My apologies.
Oh, no, that's okay. I was like, what did I miss? So, that being said, can I get a, can I get a motion to, to approve the adoption of the noted curriculum?
So moved.
Can I get a, thank you, Laura. Second?
Second.
Jessica? Any discussion? Jessica, go ahead.
It was noted that we had a presentation at this, at the May 13th meeting. And so I just wanted to note that that's available on the board website to watch if anyone is interested in more of the details of that presentation and discussion. I also just wanted to, I mean, I, well, I seconded the motion, so obviously I'm in support of the motion. But I, I also thought it was important for people to know that as part of that discussion in, in planning for this recommended curriculum, that our teaching and learning team looked at a variety of options. But our teachers across our buildings are also intimately involved with looking at this curriculum and providing feedback as we prepared for our recommendation. So I think that's really important to note as we're moving this forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Laura?
And I would like to further, further acknowledge and thank you for bringing the curriculum here so that we all had the opportunity as well to, to be able to look at it. And as always, I do believe that the public can, with accommodations, be able to look at any of the curriculum that we are teaching in any of the schools. And, and if you can explain how that process might possibly be if somebody is interested.
Yes, definitely. That is always an option. It's listed on our website, the different curriculum pieces we have, the resources that we use. And the best way would be to reach out to the teacher or the building principal for next steps. And we do have many families doing that, as well as at conferences or open houses, the different events that we have, we try to showcase the same resources that we're using within our classrooms.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It was really delightful to be able to see the curriculum, and I know that you were here and available if anybody in the community wanted to come and look at that prior to this meeting tonight. And I know that that was, that was well communicated to the community. So thank you very much for, for having that here. So. Any further discussion? All right, then we'll move forward with a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Granland, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik. I'm here to discuss overnight and out-of-state field trips. On May 13th, 2025, the school board was provided with information on requested extended field trips for the school year 2025-2026. We are seeking approval of these extended field trips.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the overnight and out-of-state field trips as presented at the May 13th board meeting?
I'll move it. Yes.
Oh, thank you. Michelle, can I get a second?
Second.
Jessica, discussion. We had a really great conversation at our previous board meeting about this and all of the super important work that goes along with that. So thank you very much. If anybody in the community has any questions about that, they can feel free to go and find that on the Youtubes. So.
Insta, the Youtubes.
No, it was not the Insta. But anyway.
You're so good.
So with that, can I get a, can I get a vote on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Last one, y'all. We got this. Yep. So next is the designation of identified official with authority for MDE External User Access Recertification System Resolution. And we have Stephanie Alvarez and Superintendent Stenvik.
Good evening, Chair Granland and members of the board and Superintendent Stenvik. I'm here tonight asking for approval of the resolution approving Xena Stenvik to act as the identified official with authority, aka IOA, and myself, Stephanie Alvarez, to act as the, as the IOA to add and remove names only for Columbia Heights Public Schools.
All right, thank you. I will read the resolution. Designation of identified official with authority for the MDE External User Access Recertification System Resolution, whereas the Minnesota Department of Education requires that school districts annually designate an identified official with authority to comply with State Access Control Security Standard 1.0, which states that all user access rights to Minnesota State systems must be reviewed and recertified at least annually. The identified official with authority will assign job duties and authorize external users' access to MDE secure systems for their local education agency or LEA. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the director recommends the board authorize Xena Stenvik to act as the identified official with authority and Stephanie Alvarez to act as the IOWA to add and remove names only for Columbia Heights Public School District. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Laura, can I get a second?
Second.
Awesome. Any discussion? Jessica?
I think we just need to make a correction to the spelling of Alvarez.
Did I misspell my own name?
Okay, I will adjust that.
With that amendment.
Thank you, thank you for catching that. I will adjust that. Thank you. That's embarrassing. You're not alone tonight.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All right. Because this is a resolution, we need a roll call vote. Michelle, if you could do that, please.
Indeed. Who? I. Madeiras?
Aye.
Petway? Aye. Palmer?
Aye.
Granland?
Aye. All right. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving into board topics. I just have a reminder to everyone that this Saturday, the 31st, is our powwow. It is indoors. It will be in the evening. And we. What?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock. Yep. So lots of time.
Grand entry, 3 o'clock. Goes from 3 to 8 p.m.
3 to 8 p.m.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So, and everybody is welcome in our community, so please come. It's a really wonderful time, and we love to see all of our families come and enjoy it. Any other board topics? Michelle?
I just have a question. So like, when we have action items and people come, and I know we always reference that we've spoken about things before and that they can find it, is it too much to ask to maybe like have that date available to give people to look it up? Is that a lot? I don't want to ask for too much.
I, I believe, for example, that Director Tuckrell mentioned that it was at the, the May 13th meeting.
I mean, maybe not for the, it doesn't have to be for the speaker, but like, it would be helpful if we could even give it out to people. But I, I don't know. I could do that homework myself, too. Like, it's not a huge deal. Like, if I see something coming up, like, I can look back. But I don't know what you guys' capacity is for, like, remembering around when, but I don't have it.
Go ahead.
The typical cadence of the board is that there's a, there's an informational presentation, and then typically, two weeks later, or at the very next board meeting, there's typically action. Every once in a while, there's, there might be a change in that, but by and large, that's how the.
Look back a week or two.
Yeah, it's the previous meeting generally.
Typically, it would be the previous board meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
But good point.
I think Michelle's point is a good one. And the, at least this time, I, I guess I've never noticed how consistent it is, but I'm assuming it is, that in the board agenda, on the board agenda, under action items for each of the descriptions, it does say, like, as presented at the May 13th board meeting or whatever else.
Thank you.
So members of the public, if they look at the agenda, they can go back and easily find that presentation. So, but this is the first I've noticed that, so.
I didn't see that.
Yeah. So that's, that's a good point. Thank you.
That's a, that's a really great point. I much appreciate it.
Sometimes these topics are so end up that it's just, you know, you know, you're kind of like, we're, we're making a decision on something, and somebody kind of looks, might look at it and just kind of go, wow, that was kind of a big subject. Why in the world aren't you talking about that?
Right.
We talked about it for three hours two weeks ago.